Great, thank you. All right, I would like to call the meeting to an end. Wednesday, May 7th, 2025, Lendons Select Board Meeting. This meeting is being recorded. And if you could please stand in your own way. Thank you. Great.
Literally what it's like being in IT. Not any different.
All right, so, item two, citiments. Citaments. Citizens' statements and petitions. I don't see anyone here in the room, anyone online? See any hands online? So then, leading minutes, we have a backlog. I know people have sent some feedback to Katie. She is working on that, but she's out sick, so we'll need to revisit those at our next meeting. But if you do have additional edits that came up that you noticed, since then, please do send those along. And we'll have those next time.
Who wants to send those to you or to Katie? Or to?
Great, thank you. All right, so then, that's, yeah, items three and four, leading minutes for review. I'm not sure that people have, I'm not sure everybody's seen those recent minutes yet, so we'll make sure that those get sent out to everyone. Then, community events, we have a lot of things coming up. It's getting to be that time of year. So, okay, I'm gonna do these sort of in a order that they're coming up. So, town election is on May 13th. That is very important, so that is this Tuesday, at Misco Hill School, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. So there are a number of uncontested races, including the select board. And then, but also importantly, three ballot questions about the debt exclusions that we've discussed at great length in these meetings. So it's really important that everybody gets out and votes for that.
Senator, I just think about a comment I noticed in somebody in the, in one of the social media pages talking about confusion about, you know, allowing for, word is an override, the debt exclusion, exactly what a yes/no means.
Ah, yes.
Do we have the language and just make people understand? If you vote yes, it means that can occur the debt.
Right.
If we vote no, it means we can't.
Right, yes, I don't have the ballot in front of us, but yes, that is, that's important to note, that rights applies to all three of the questions. They're all, they have different wording, but this, so, because they're about different sub-projects. All capital exclusion, or debt exclusions for capital projects for the schools. But right, I guess, authorizes the school district to take on that debt. And it, yeah, we're gonna, later on the agenda, we're gonna do a little bit of an ATM, like, postmortem, as it were, but I think it's relevant to say that these debt exclusions, in their past, they need to pass both at town meeting and at the ballot. And they did all three passed at town meeting in Lenden, and actually in Upton as well. And they passed the ballot in Upton last night as well. Yeah, yeah.
And if anyone wants to look at a sample ballot before the election, there's a sample ballot on top.
Ah, good point, yes. Right. And then, all right, I think, anything else about the election?
Do you want to put the ballot up?
Oh, sure. It's a good idea, okay. Well, so I'll talk about some of the other events. So that's coming up, and we're gonna show, share that on the screen shortly. Other events, we have two events on Saturday, May 17th. So the Cultural Council's scavenger hunt, which is going to be a walking scavenger hunt, looking at historic sites in Lenden, all in this sort of compact area. They expect people to be able to walk around and without needing to drive. And then also the Lenden Lion Club Annual Tabor Room for Sight will be, I believe, at the lights on 16th and North Avenue. There's a rain date for that one. And I know, like, the scavenger hunt, they have a rain date as well. It may have shifted, so I don't know. If I looked at the forecast, I saw that there was going to be rain later this week. So hopefully that will not impact those events. And then, coming up in June, but worth mentioning now is the Friends of Lenden Elders are having their progressive, annual progressive yard sale on June 7th. And that is a fundraiser for the Friends of Lenden Elders. They support a lot of the programming done at the senior center, a lot of community programming there. And so, encourage people to check that out. I know the Friends of Lenden Elders have a new website as well, where they will have information about signing up to get your yard sale registered. They put together a map so that people can see where the yard sales are around town. Find the ballot?
We have the town election warrant, I cannot find the ballot.
Did you see it on Facebook? Okay. I know I've seen it in the, on the website.
Yeah, the general election for all is there.
Word silence. But it's useful to have it be, before we get too far into the agenda, if we're going to show it. Okay. All right, well, I think if, give it maybe thirty more seconds. All right, so certainly, people can contact the town clerk as well. And I think if we are not able to find that sample ballot, we can make sure the town clerk will let us know how to find it. You found it, excellent. Okay. So, as you can see, we have a number of races for.
There we go.
That's pretty good.
Yep. And then, right, our three questions. Question one, Nipmuck Roof. Question two, facilities, also for MURSD, multiple schools, all, actually, all four schools. And then, question three is athletic facilities, which will be at both Nipmuck and Misco Hill. So in both towns. And these are debt exclusions that will be taken on by MURSD if they're approved by both towns. And the debt will be shared, the payment for that debt will be shared by both towns as well. But we've talked about it a lot, so I think people can revisit our meetings or the school committee meetings. They presented quite a lot on these proposals. So I would encourage everybody to do your research. All right, so thank you for finding that.
Yeah, I'll post it on the town, I can say, or Facebook, that was a sample defined.
Okay, great. All right, so that was it for community events. As far as I know, any more to add? I'm sure more will be coming up this summer. So then, are we ready for appointments?
Yeah, we forgot Jennifer O'Neill, HR Coordinator, online. This Mia Lanigan could not attend tonight, so we have Jen. So Jen, if you want to talk about the Inspection Services Administrative Assistant position?
Sure, sure, can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So we posted this position, we got, I think it was sixteen candidates, I have to get the exact amount. On that, we interviewed four, and, and four strong candidates, actually, for this position. And we have made an offer to Mia Lanigan to be the Administrative Assistant to the Building, Planning and CBA. She actually comes to us as an employee, seasonally, through the Parks Department. She's worked for them for four years. And she has a really strong technical background, which I know the Inspection Services is very excited about. So we are hoping to have her appointed to start on Monday, May 19th. It is a union position, so it'll be starting at an M6 Step 5 at 2271. And she has passed the basic background core check that we have in place for these candidates. So any other questions, let me know.
Yeah, you anticipated my questions. Great, so, so then I think I would be looking for a motion.
I move to approve the appointment. Mia Lanigan, Inspection Services Administrative Assistant, Building, Planning, CBA Position, M6, Appalling, 2271, ground, Saturday, Monday, May 28th.
Second, I'll say in discussion, this position previously, as conscrewed, mayors supported the building and CBA. As we reconfigure Inspection Services for July 1st, this position will report directly to the incoming Jack McClellan, Inspection Services Coordinator, in that part of his role. And I think that will provide a lot more support on a day-to-day for the new employee, rather than reporting to the Building Commissioner, who we have fifteen hours a week, and not fifteen hours a week.
Okay, so it's reporting to a full-time employee.
But rather than wait until July 1st, we're starting that.
Yes.
Structure on May 1st.
Wonderful, thank you. Any further discussion? Right, all in favor? Post? Great, well, welcome, Mia, if you ever watch this, I'm looking forward to meeting you. Okay, so then, seven is discuss the annual town meeting, which we have on Friday. And, yeah, Jeremy, did you want to start us off?
Yeah. I thought it would be important for the board to debrief a little bit, or talk about any follow-ups, anything people wanted to see coming out of town meeting? Any, you know, things we already want to make sure we have on special town meeting? I will say, from my perspective, I've already spoken with the capital planning folks about scheduling their kickoff meeting in the next week or two. They should grab back, the last person should grab back, and we were there availability, there yesterday. So we'll have kind of capital lined up for STM, that was something that I wanted to make sure we had coming out of there. But I thought the meeting went, the meeting went well, I thought people were engaged and warned, and, you know, we have a budget, so principally, principal task.
I, yeah, also thought the meeting went well, and I appreciate, Jeremy, all the work that you did on that document, the, the Town Administrator's, what do you call it?
Worship.
Ward Report. That was, I think, really helpful to have that spelled out in such detail. And I think, I know that that was a lot of work, and I think it was really helpful. And I think it contributed to the smoothness of the overall meeting. And, yeah, I want to also thank everybody else who put in work to make that town meeting run smoothly, because I know it is definitely like a group effort.
So my goal on that report next year is when we send out the two or three-page warrants to folks, to not send out the fifty-page warrant report, but send out the warrant and then have on it a QR code and a link that says you can find the warrant report here. So then folks can access it a week or two.
Great. And I also, I think it worked really well to have the financial status at the beginning, so to have that prepared. I know we've, sometimes, we've often read it out loud, but I think it's useful for people to see that. I know, like, to process it visually as well as auditorily, and I think it makes it more concrete for people.
Yeah, because the slides, that, that was, they were short, but like having the reading and the listening at the same time.
And then you have to walk the fine line of saying, we're in good shape, but, you know, we're not like swimming and stuff, right? We can't afford everything that everybody wants.
Yeah, so, I think, yeah, so I guess, any other thoughts about how we might want to approach special town meeting? Any, any changes? Will there be a warrant report for the special town meeting as well? That's the goal.
I will say, town clerk, just yesterday, the way we phrased the gender neutrality warrant or motion may not be sufficient for the Attorney General's Office, because we didn't say change A to B or change.
Oh, that's right, maybe to General. Okay, so that may, that may get bounced back to us?
So we may be bringing that up at special town meeting by saying, change all of he to their, all his to they, their.
Right, okay.
Delineate the specific changes.
I think that, that does make sense. I think it still moves us towards that goal, even if we're not able to completely implement it now.
It will start with the conversation with General Vila Review Committee. My anticipation was that we weren't going to say his slash her, that we're going to say their. So I guess get that clarification on what their recommendation is. I don't know yet, it's gonna be doing the redlining.
Have you looked at the people or other missed guys knowledge aid?
I typically see, you know, I shouldn't say that. I've seen both his/her and their. I had a request from FinCom, FinCom member, to say their, because it's, is more inclusive of language, which I would pick either way on, so I said, great, you know, we'll go that way. But in terms of who does the work, I don't.
Yeah, I think if you, the sentiment was it to be gender neutral, and if you use any gender language, that's not gender neutral. So I think, you know, a completely non-binary language resolves all of that.
I think so too, and what the AGO said to us is, yeah, the motion has to include that.
Okay.
Sorry, AGO is the Attorney General's Office.
I mean, I, it's something that, I mean, I would be interested in participating in, if there's, there's room for that.
There's always.
It is sort of, I have professional interest, so, since I am a linguist, you know.
Yes. That is definitely true. For more assistance for that, sorry. Because I am not a linguist.
Yeah.
There's a couple things to be, like, just like a couple hours, almost, up the Upton School, but you gave updates, Upton voted yesterday.
The, the election, yeah, I, I heard that all three passed, yep, yes.
And you'll be able to update on the BBT question with any other stands or votes on it?
I, as you voted, I, as, and in town meeting voted on it, I sent a note to the other TAs, and I had at least two send their note back to say, like, how did it go, like, what happened? So I laid it out a little bit. All checked to see what other town meetings are. I don't have a tally, but.
Did we know if Upton, I mean, they had their town meeting. They passed.
I couldn't pass that town meeting, and the election was, yeah, so.
I don't think it's not, it's not on the other side, so, yeah. The question, yeah. So do you know, I mean, do you know the BBT question passed at Upton? But you, is your impression that it did? You heard that it did, okay. Okay. Well, hopefully, there will be more discussion generated, so that we have more transparency around that process. Is there anything else about the annual town meeting?
Could you use some fans towards the end? It got pretty hot.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's a good thing.
Well, you know, isn't one of, one of the MURSD projects involves those, right? The, what are they called? Building Management System, which I think should improve the air quality and temperature of all of the buildings. So that's a good, good point.
Yes, BBT stabilization did pass up to.
Thank you for checking on that. Yeah, so, yeah. All right, well, so then, let's move along to eight. And I think, Jason, is this primarily you, or Jeremy, did you have things you wanted to start us with? Go ahead, Jason.
All right. So, I didn't look in the packet. Did you, did we have the email included with the quote in it? All right, great. So let me share my screen, and I will show you what I'm talking about here. All right, so a while back, we had, we had talked about AI and Teams meetings, and we tried some things out, and, you know, we all got a thirty-day trial, and we ran through that whole process. And then a lot of things happened. And here we are, a year later. And so I reached out, in there is the quote for the pricing. I reached out to our vendor to ask, you know, what would, what would this cost going forward? There's a pricing change that happens in July. That is pretty normal for Microsoft, they're starting to amp up some of this AI pricing to cover their costs. But what you're looking at right now is, like, this is a recording of the Conservation Commission. And what the feature would light up for those with a license is this View Recap button. So after the recording, and so this is for Concom, I'll go look at select board in just a minute. After recording, you get this separate dialogue where you can go through to look where people have talked inside the video, right? So that's one of the features. If there's enough data, it will generate topics and channels. But some of the most interesting information would be what you see inside of the meeting notes. And so you can see, for example, the DDP file comments was, must have been an extended conversation, as there are, you know, multiple sub-items under these, which means it went on for a while. And these are the summaries of what happened in there. So there's like a roll-up, and then the more detailed summary information. And sometimes you've seen me copy this out and put it in the chat. And then the transcript, if there were any mentions of me, there were not. If there were mentions of you, you would see that in there. And then, like, from here, the transcript, you can even just go ahead and do a search. So I'm doing a search, here we go. So we did get issued a DDP file. Now, if I click on that, you see it's gonna go right to that section inside the video where that search is. All right, so, these are features, like, searching transcripts is something you could do. You can copy all that content out, search through it in a text editor. What this does is it brings that in, so that the words are correlated with the point in time of the video, so that when we click on those words, you know, whatever they are, they're gonna synchronize to that point in time. So you get the notes generated by the AI, you get the transcript, and you get any additional metadata that it's able to pull out of there. So if we go over and take a look at, this looks slightly different for the select board, because we use this channel methodology. But inside, here's today's meeting, you can see it's being recorded right now. Inside the select board meetings, the View Recap button's a little smaller. But if we click on that, you're gonna get the exact same interface. And so you can see, here's the select board meeting. Here's where, in this meeting, Jen talked at this point in time, right? So we can go right up and just click and see that she talked there, and go see that section of the video. Same thing here with the, you know, the AI-generated summaries. And you can see in here that I was mentioned twice by Katie, and I can go see where she mentioned me. Now, it's not always gonna pull out those names, but it does, does its best job to do that. And the same thing with the search. So, the discussion tonight is, are, you know, I, these features are valuable enough for me to continue paying for a license in my corporate life. These are a small subset of features, this is a smaller license than, say, a full AI license from Microsoft, which would be something like Copilot. Copilot is another ten or twelve dollars a month. That gives you AI access across all of the office apps. This is just focused on AI inside of the meeting space. The one additional thing it does, it won't matter to us, but to Katie or to other people generating meetings, with an AI premium license, we can do town hall format types of videos with watermarks, with held commentary, and, you know, moderated questions, and waiting rooms, and all sorts of more elaborate premium features, like hosting ten thousand people, which would be more than. So, so there's like a bunch of town hall meeting features that are available, that we would use very rarely, but are good for large format meetings. I think mainly, what you get out of this is any meeting that you are following or attending, you would get this recap on. So it's highly useful, not for, not always for a meeting that you've attended, although that's, it's useful to go back and look at notes, I do that a lot. It's really useful for meetings where you might be an attache or a, you know, advisor or consultant, and you're trying to keep track of that meeting, and it might happen at the same time as your meeting. For example, the Vila Review Committee meetings are on Wednesdays, they're almost always the same time as this meeting. Best way for me to catch up, I look at those AI notes, I find sections I'm interested in, I check out those parts of the video, I send notes over to the chair. So, I think it's very useful. I think using the Microsoft licensing keeps the third-party AI out of our tenant. It controls the AI, meaning that it stays secure inside of our space under our Microsoft agreements. It doesn't leak out into other parts of the world, meaning that if you have private meetings, you're gonna have them all the time, and you want to use these features in that space, they work just fine, right? So, and it's kept there with you, and you're the one who sees it. So, this data is still saved in your OneDrive, like, wherever the meeting, whoever recorded the meeting, that's where it gets, it's like, right now, I'm recording the meeting. So that content gets saved into my OneDrive and shared with all of you. That still continues to happen. So this is really hot, if, if we go about and purchase this, it's, if we purchase licenses for the select board and the town administrator and the town admin, we would be talking around a hundred dollars a month, I believe.
Not even, it's twelve dollars and eighteen cents if we purchase it for a full year, like, twelve dollars and eighteen cents per month if we commit to a full year worth of licenses. So seven of them would be one thousand twenty-three dollars for the year.
So that's unlimited meeting summaries and notes for a year for a thousand dollars.
But those individual seat licenses, its functionality is just available to those people who are licensed?
Yes.
And it's to, like, individual license to an individual user?
Yes.
So.
Yeah, so nowadays, everything is moving to consumption, subscription-based style licensing. The, I believe the cost goes up to fifteen?
Yeah, it's like eighteen.
Eighteen?
A month, if you go a month per month? Seventy, yeah. So a single license costs a hundred and forty-six dollars a year if you prepaid for all twelve. So if, find usefulness in this license in this board, and then the other board meetings, which you attend, to get it for one person per board, you know, we get it, not for the entire Conservation Commission, we get it for a company, we get for a seller.
So if you get one person with this license, you're licensed without.
That person gets the detail, they can copy the AI summary back into the chat, which is often what I do. It's just copy it back and put it in the chat. You lose the, you know, these like indexing. Yeah, the things that make it easy to, you know, get into metadata, you know, interact.
All right, there, you found the notes.
So that, the AI premium, personally, I find to be more accurate than Copilot. And I think that's, has to do with their training. So it's, it's pretty good. It's much better than like what you see when we have a transcript running.
I did.
Yeah, that's a totally different technology.
So it doesn't read that transcript in some way, is it?
It is building that transcript, and when words don't make sense, it finds the right word based on the context.
It doesn't update the transcript?
It does not update the transcript.
If I did notice that, I thought things in transcript that didn't make any sense, but hit the notes there.
It, it knows because it's processing the audio and the text at the same time, and it's checking itself. So it's much more accurate than some of these more generic games. For, for meeting summaries. For, for meeting summaries after the fact, it's better than Copilot. For in a meeting, Copilot is way better. If you're in a, Copilot is an interesting feature for Microsoft. When you're in a meeting, you can summarize a meeting while you're in. So if you're not following the conversation, if you come in late, that's something where you can say, Copilot, tell me what's going on. Is this meeting contentious? You can ask it contextual questions. This is a machine learning AI that has a very specific set of tasks and it does those tasks very well. Copilot is always changing and so it's always getting new features and everything and it makes it a little bit more unpredictable. But its capacity to do work is much higher and that's why they charge much more.
Do you know if the state is looking at this type of technology for purposes of minutes? Allowing it to be used for minutes?
I haven't heard any, I haven't heard.
There's been some, so I've gone to a couple sessions, they've done some workshops. In general, they say the best thing for you to do is define your own local policy and follow it. And it doesn't seem like, it's probably not safe for them to dictate that at the state level right now without directing you to a systemic technology. Because they're all of them do things so differently.
But, but even just to say, if you, they're saying you can set your own policy, that's fine by me. You know, we don't come back around and say you can't do that.
No, they're treating it like they treat recorded meetings right now, which is we have a policy to record our meetings.
Well, Mike, Mike, wait for open meeting though. I'm just saying that our recordings cannot be substituted for minutes.
Right.
I'm looking at, can the AI transcript from this technology be used to?
I don't believe it can. I believe it can be an assistant, but you still have to write your meeting notes. So where this would assist, I'm guessing, so throw it out here if I'm wrong. Where would assist Katie and Jeremy is in the case, which seems from what my talking to them, the case where they have to go back and clarify a point for a meeting note. And they can't exactly hear, that's why we're trying these new microphones. Can't exactly hear what's going on. They have to replay it. And in the AI notes, you could go right to it. You could check what the AI said based on what your human heard and make sure your meeting note correlates to that. So I think a lot of stuff is in AI space is more about checking yourself than using it for.
Or also finding, because I mean, just a little time meeting, want to go back to two thousand and three.
Right.
Yeah. We'll read those B D S and be, you know, skimming.
Well, we'll talk about saving those notes and then an upcoming meeting. But that's another thing, this, the meetings leave themselves after six months.
I was gonna ask you, so what's our capacity for retention for videos and?
Which I think is another.
That's another.
Yeah.
But I think, I think this is all has to be looked at. Cause they all work together. I mean, for the cost, I say we keep running with it and I'd ask them to get signed licenses. Because everybody on the select board needs a license, you know?
The licenses can be reassigned.
Actually, I said, and all of a sudden, if we think it's worthwhile, we can actually reassign that increase the cost to admins across other committees, you know what I mean? Take a lot of flexibility if we can assign.
I think for a thousand dollars in the utility, we can possibly get out of it. It's, it's worth it for a year and we'll come to reassess.
Yeah. Uh, so how would we?
Well, I'm sorry, use the, yeah, this is a lot of this to drag, I assume.
Oh, like actually, like Brendan never clicked on.
Yeah. Jason uses it every, every meeting. God, I've never seen it go in his technology. Why is that?
I don't know the answer to that. I know that we can do that in Copilot.
Sorry, I should have thrown myself under the bus, not Brendan.
That's something I'd have to look into and.
It'd be good to know.
Yeah.
Especially if people start saying, why, you know? And then go away and look what we can do with it.
Yeah, right.
And then, I mean, I guess another question I had is whether it's like by like, like individual account, I mean, like there's like, like, isn't there like a TA, for example?
I'm just thinking about.
Like their accounts, like at least for email accounts, there, there are some that are individuals. There's like a town clerk email and then on Agrohouse, for example.
Yeah.
Like, is it, is it have to be like the named individual or can it be licensed to like?
You're talking about the flexibility of licensing. The, the, the person doesn't matter. Every email account is a person.
Right.
If it's a bot.
Right.
So, so it would be okay to assign the town clerk at mendenmass.gov the license if just the town clerk, if just one person is using that account. If, if you, where the license agreement you would be vending is if it were a shared account.
Such as select board, for example?
Yeah, that's like a main email address. And, and not be like a person.
Right.
But yes, or like town meeting, in town meetings, it's like a generic login. We couldn't use it for that. That would be against the license.
And, and just to confirm, you said it's only seat, there's no site license?
There's no site license. No, I mean, you can get discounts on bulk seat purchases. But that's a cap would be way higher than whatever. Yeah, I mean, there's other places where AI gets introduced into the licensing. If we change our licensing on the office suite as a whole for the entire app. There are some deal sweeteners in there. But again, I don't, I don't know that we would ever, that we have that need for that level of, of software suite, but you know.
So, you know, I, I say we, I'd be in favor of pursuing it. But I'd also suggest as a board, if we're all gonna start with us being assessed, if we roll this into our point twenty-six goals to poorly have a, have a, have a more reputation for recap.
Yeah, we can get this to ten clicks for that quarter.
How we use it when we need it to broaden issues, et cetera.
But, you know, I agree.
So you just have to be invited to the meeting to have that, if that works, like if I wanted to.
You have to be following, so you can't decline it and have never been part of that chat. It's kind of about, you know how like you have to be a member of the chat?
Yeah.
So if you're following, you put that follow button when you get a, when you get a calendar invite or you click accept and you just don't go. Those two things would give you.
So ideally, I have like all of the things.
Right, yeah. Well, you have to be invited.
Well, but also I think.
I mean, we're not.
I think more likely to use the Microsoft Office for meeting scheduling should be really, especially committees, should be huge. I don't think we always use Office to schedule meetings. If you're telling me I went with the E D C. You know, I started meeting now from the chair and I attended, because I'm gonna be. So I wasn't aware of that. Yeah, I think that's just Microsoft the way you would in the office. And I think they agree policy to institute people actually scheduling meetings. So you can look at calendars and understand when they're busy, when they're not, you know what I mean?
So that was the, so that was the impetus behind creating that town meeting team where everybody can see all the meetings. And, and of course, the select board's been using that channel for a really long time, I think. Dan, he's not on anymore. Dan Hill is also using some of those for some of his meetings, like historical and whatnot. That makes it so that anybody can see any meeting and join any meeting.
Team versus just Microsoft Office and maybe schedules.
They're the same.
Okay.
So like if you schedule something in Office, that, I mean, in Outlook, it shows up in Teams. The, the difference is if you schedule a meeting in a Teams channel that's public, anybody can see and join that meeting versus if you schedule it in Outlook, you'd have to be invited. Uh, but they're, like, the calendar invite goes, it's any place.
So this really will maximize values, make sure that all of us can see the many meetings as possible.
Yes, I mean, we can put some other efforts into programmatically getting those items out of all those meetings. This, this is, this is the coordination effort to ensure that every board and committee did what Mike's asking. It's a heavy lift. It's something that we talked about in, uh, when we were running the IT working group. And I talked about it all the time, right? And we actually wrote to standardized meeting documents on how to create a meeting, what templates to use, all that kind of, we did all that work. Then we were like, how do we get everybody to actually do this? We like, we can't tell the board of health how to run their meetings. We can make suggestions. We can tell groups that, you know, roll up to us how to do so.
But we, we can invite.
Yeah.
Boards and committees that don't.
Right, we can make that available as a, as a resource as well.
This way.
Yeah.
To benefit of task whole, you know what I mean?
I know, like, long, long ago, there was like a multi-board and committee meeting. Like, it seems like if we had something like that, again, it could be presented as an option. That, I mean, it would be potentially voluntary for some of the elected boards to decide. But we could like advocate for it and also make the, make the resources available about how to do it. So I know some, some of the boards and committees, they don't meet very often and, and the, not everybody is equally tech savvy.
Yeah.
But so they might actually appreciate a little bit of guidance.
But it would be there, because I do see, you know, the positive idea of being, follow these meetings and I go back in and look at the summary and, you know, two minutes.
Yeah.
Looking for.
Yeah.
Maybe in future agenda, I can actually do a tutorial for this, for this, for sure. You know, I know what I'm supposed to know.
Thank you. Yeah, but then I would be more than happy to live that much story.
And the thing is, well, we don't, but you get them happy, reporting, actually getting to use.
Yeah.
Teach, teach, teach everything, you know?
Yep. So last, was that last Monday? I think last Monday I came in here and did a lunch session. First app on using Office three sixty-five suite. You walk through like the, the apps that they didn't know they had available to them, all the functionality sitting in OneDrive, that kind of basic stuff. We could follow up with a, with a meeting series.
So who, who was that with?
Uh, that was Jen's, you know, she does that lunch and learn series. So there was people, you know, people from the board of health.
So please.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It might be something that, at least to the, the boards that would be getting the agenda suite access, we could probably do that and at the same time, rolling a standardized meeting and using the new agenda process from the website. Which kind of all tied into.
I'm telling, yep.
Sounds great.
That's good.
Yes, sir.
If there's a meeting that I'm invited to, I want to, I want to get a super here, but I can't go. Cause there will be that through the Teams.
So that's, that, so you didn't get the, you didn't get the meeting.
If I get the meeting, like I go to the town administration, like get the, the agenda. I want to sign up my chance to.
So yes.
So I'm trying to go on that and then a part of the chat.
Yes. But there might be another better way to do that. I think that's something I have to look into.
Okay.
Cause that's a good point, if it were available right there.
Isn't there a way for us to have some kind of global way to invite ourselves to the meetings?
Now, unfortunately, calendaring, it's like one of the oldest technologies. It's like, it's as old as email, right? Um, so that hasn't really, how it works hasn't really changed.
Right, I mean, I, I hear Brendan ask the question. And say, I think I understand what else to do. Then I get the response of how we do. He said, uh huh. So I would say that in general, we should try to capture these ideas. If you have an actual document already, let's kind of enhance that so we can.
Yeah, yeah, I will let the AI notes from this meeting inform me how to.
It's like, it didn't use very kind of often, you're, you're, you ask half the question, he's already understands it's coming. You're answering, you're editing, you know, something, that's what I was just crossing. Alright, I think I can do it, but I'm not sure.
He, he's, in general, he's saying like, we used to go to the website to see items on the calendar, right? They all have these meeting links. So if you weren't invited, he's asking, if I click on that link, is there a way, you know, I wasn't invited to get in? And then he said, if I just join for a second, I'm part of the chat. So I'll get the recap and that was us. Sure, yeah. If you just, if you just are part of that at any point in time, it becomes part of.
But if you don't attend the meeting, which is the original premise.
Right, then that would have to be, yeah, one of these more open sessions. But this is definitely good feedback. This is something that they get into. This is where technology can't always solve all your problems, unfortunately. So to solve the like master meeting issue in our, the document that we wrote about creating a meeting, we always said, put in Menden Town Meetings and Ellen and the board members as organizers on that meeting so that they can make changes to that meeting. That never happens because it's really complicated. It's like thirteen clicks. Um, and so one of those things, like until you do the muscle memory, after time, it never gets done. Perfect.
I think the, the next, over the next year, we're gonna be able to kick tires to the point where we're gonna cover all these little things. Like, I wonder if we could do this or that, the other thing, you know?
Yeah, and then maybe, uh, maybe this is limiting and, and, you know, it does become valuable enough to upgrade it to a more of a full AI suite across all of Office, which would be SharePoint. So the things I told you about here, could you imagine being able to ask your documents questions? That would be super useful, right? Um, so that technology's all.
Scary, you know?
Well, like when you get a document filled with legal stuff like that we were emailed earlier today, I'd be, it's very hard to know exactly what's going on. And you wanna ask very specific questions. I use the AI to help me with that, right? Cause I don't speak legalism. That could be embedded in, it could also help draft. It could also help check. So there's a lot of things that could happen later on if it were, if it were useful enough for us. But I think starting with meeting summaries is kind of the biggest step, first step.
I guess the big question is what are the next steps? I mean, this is, we don't, we don't, okay, so as this is coming out of select board budget.
This was my question for Jason, the response from Brian said, your current commitment, David team's premium ends in August.
So apparently we paid for a license.
Just one?
And we did now, yeah.
So I, yeah, I would, I would wanna wait until July one. Because technically you can't, if you start a service in fiscal twenty-five, that goes until like this point next year in twenty-six. You can use twenty-five money for it. I try to line it up with, with July one. Or I think I start June one. Oftentimes there's a net thirty payment and I'll pay it in July. It's eleven months and one fiscal year and one in the other.
Yeah, it's just two months, two, five months waiting.
So I would start this in July.
Who's Brian?
From Worldband, attack from.
If Willbin gave us a license, I'd remind us what we bought. We should not know that we didn't.
Yeah, I just know it.
Right, and probably it's still not sure where we have pulled, I don't know. But if you just gotta get a.
It's very balkanized in how we get billed for stuff, which is why it wasn't obvious to me.
Yeah, no, no, I don't care. The billing's good, but Willbin should also tell us exactly here's what we signed that for, this is what we bought. So that'd be good, you know? What, what did we lose by not knowing we had the premium ones? Like, what did that give us?
Well, it gave me a license. And, and since I already have all these other licenses, like more identity, I didn't. So, and one of those things, like I'm over licensed, my barber will.
So we don't need to do anything more as a board now?
No, we, we got, we got a thousand dollars in twenty-six where we can license this starting on July one. Okay, July fifteenth or whatever.
And so in a future meeting, I'd like to talk about the hardware we have laid out here and what to do about that. Cause if this is useful, this is only a couple hundred dollars in pushing, I have sitting here. But, you know, I bought it as well.
Oh, okay, alright. Okay, yeah, we should talk about that. Okay, so then, uh, let's move on to number nine. It is a select board by law review records retention discussion. So I think Jason, was it also you bringing this forward?
This is me bringing it forward on behalf of the Bylaw Review Committee because they want clarification, this should be in. They would like clarification on the, the storage, like if, if we are to be saying we are, you know, recording meetings, which we do say in our bylaws. Are we storing them in perpetuity? Or are we creating a retention policy by which they will be? Are we storing them in perpetuity, or uh are we creating a retention policy by which they will be, you know, held for? Um, and so. There are no. There are no rules around this. When it comes to the video storage or the transcript store.
Mm hmm.
Right, we're just relying on YouTube.
Mm hmm.
Seeing movies kind of all through that.
Right.
Most of statutory for um. Of artists.
Um, most things are seven years, um, but this is not something that we need to keep, we have the minutes, so this is something that we're under an obligation.
Right, but I think given our last discussion. Having this available to go backwards sometimes actually might be.
Oh, yeah, certainly, we just does.
I just want, I would not want it to be retention beyond the statutory. Regulation.
Hmm.
That's it.
Yeah. So I mean, YouTube is also. Difficult because it's not a public.
Right.
Good, but it is.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
But it's part, it's part of the own and you have no.
During no control, um. For example, they have their own AIs that generate transcripts, that generate language. You know, how is that language the same as our language? If we ask an AI the question about that video, would it answer the same thing as the question about a video here inside of our tenant? The answer is maybe. Um, you know, probably answer it the same way. Uh, but you don't really know, and we don't have any control over that, and once the data is there, it's there. Forever. And we don't own it anymore. So.
We still hold the teams for.
For sixty days or per uh hundred eighty days until they delete. So that.
Go all the way that before the hundred eighty gets there, that we store it at some point.
No, we we can tell our team's recordings to stay for as long as you want, it's just right now, the default is six months.
What is the Secretary of the Commerce? I don't think the legislature even classify it permanently.
I, the last time it did, it was another temporary year.
Yeah, several games.
It was two years.
By law, by law that we passed at all meetings will be, you know, published and recorded.
Yeah, it doesn't say, doesn't say recorded.
Or doesn't say published, you know?
Yeah, well, it seems to me that. I I know we have, it seems to me that. Would be a good idea to save those videos.
Mm hmm.
The teams would just store them.
Mm hmm.
Try to treat them the same as minutes.
That's what I, that's why, I mean, the point is, you know, we're we're approving minutes, that makes it consistent.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So then the the storage question then goes to, uh. The the way that we're allocated storage is based on the amount of users that we pay for license. I don't know what the direct correlation is right now, like, I don't know how much storage we have allocated to mended town. But if we keep meetings uh in perpetuity or for seven years.
We have, we have keep minutes in perpetuity, according to Secretary of the Commerce.
We keep what?
We keep minutes in perpetuity.
Right, but I'm saying videos, if we keep them in perpetuity or even for seven years, we will eventually need to pay for additional storage. Beyond what's allocated to us for our user set. I don't know what that number is, I don't know how much we're using right now, definitely get all that information from Worldman, um. But it will incur a cost. Couldn't that be the point?
Couldn't we just buy. Terrifying drive. This is a lot of things that I do now, and some of these investigations I do. And I put things on an memory card. And I, you know, we talked about, we use, why we're using? Why don't we just take the physical memory?
Well, the card will eventually degrade. So.
Right.
So that problem, um, if you want to access those meetings again, they need to be available on an internet, intranet someplace, right? If they're on a a disk drive, that disk drive needs to be backed up, so like at some point in time, you gotta pay somebody.
Mm hmm.
To make sure your stuff is safe, doesn't matter how you do it. But it has to happen eventually.
Thought about that, we don't have it on a small speed drive and. Take this board because they're in two places in two different mediums.
Yep. Yep. So.
And as soon as it feels like right now, videos are nice to have, right? Cause they're not. They're not legally required, so even if you go on that, that's what you're saying makes sense to me, so we're, we use YouTube down like. Because screens unlimited storage, it is that thing, why we do, why how the stuff gets YouTube?
Oh, because at that damn, like, we put it all to YouTube, so we did.
No, no, but but so YouTube, if there's not a, is it unlimited? Storage, we just control all the content.
Right, and and we potentially don't. Potentially, they could take it down, right? Like, like.
Yeah.
We don't have any say over it, right?
Well.
I'll I'll give you a really good example, how it can get taken down. Like tomorrow, how this meeting can get taken down tomorrow. Yes, exactly, play copyrighted music during the meeting, it's automatically detected, the video gets pulled, and then the resident says, where's your video? Um, so that's where, I mean, that, I don't know why we play copyrighted music during a during a meeting, but that's a, that's an instance that happens pretty well. Um, and so that's the control we don't have, if we had it internally here. And open, but but accessing video beyond six months is still rare, that's why it's. Set at six months.
There are differences between, so I know the nail is you can get that like live available storage and you pay a little bit less than our.
Yeah, so cold storage is still a thing, um, but what happens when you put something into cool or cold storage, the cooler storage? Yeah, that's a real word, uh, there's warm and hot too, um, when you when you warm down storage, you don't, you you pay less for it.
Yeah.
Until you retrieve data for it, then you pay four times as much as if it were.
Right.
Yeah, so the only only way that type of cold storage is valuable to an organization is if they're never gonna actually look at. But most of the use cases we are talking about are, well, we want to go get that information, look at, we want to watch the video, in that case. You're back up to spending money again.
I think it would be great to be able to take. Tom, you put it from twenty years ago, and pull it up.
I mean, that would be phenomenal.
Yeah.
Um. I would have hair twenty years ago, so I mean.
That makes a special to the to the to this particular question.
Mm hmm.
I recommend you state the subject to reference retention policy set by the board, select, and we have no set policy, yeah.
Mm hmm.
But that's a a different action model. Because I think what I'm hearing is different, we need to figure out what we think best true attention uh solution is.
Yeah, but we do, we do, we should have a policy, we do have to have a policy of potential.
Right.
Right, but but we don't know what it is yet, so if that refers to their work, they can reference a bomb, a yet to to be determined policy, right?
And I think that gives future boards uh flexibility in terms of, you know. Adapting to technological change without going to town meeting for a bylaw.
Right.
Different.
Yeah, that'd be good. With that?
It's the Celtics, right? No, but uh, I I think there's a large future agenda, I mean, I think.
Right.
What the solution is.
Mm hmm.
Cause they got different solutions and different um audiences, so not only just how to restore it and retrieve it. For ourselves, but.
Like what are the use cases?
Public, public consumption is the best meeting there, no clue that. I guess more.
Yeah, so it seems like uh. Developing a uh records retention policy would be a future agenda item, maybe a future subcommittee.
But do we want to talk about all records in the same way or just specifically meeting?
I I think I want to buy some smelting. Video, meaning.
Right.
There was a lot of things that are already, there's already.
Right.
The Commonwealth requires.
Right.
I think as we're talking about meetings. Retention about video, yeah, at least meetings.
And I think, right, when when we're on this task specifically, we can explore those related questions, I think we're not gonna. We're not gonna solve them tonight, I guess, is what I thought, so.
Yeah.
Um, so that I don't know, this could be. Among our, you know, next goals or like, but I think for future agenda topic, but it seems like the sort of like developing a policy, I know. Some of us have more experience of it than others, uh, like, uh, so, but I think it would be, it would be good to. To move it to that process, um.
I just be one of those ones too, I don't see other, Zoom and recordings are just amended thing, I'd be curious to see what it's.
Yeah, yes, definitely.
Yeah.
It's almost always step one when we're like, let's create something here.
Yeah, so like, right, if we didn't, if we could write. Borrow somebody's records retention policy and just change the.
Well, let me tell you about this great AI tool I saw.
Hmm.
So there's a, there's a, um, there's a AI company working uh in Massachusetts with MIT. Um, to try to do policy generation for small town. Uh municipalities like us, uh, who would be asking those exact same questions, like, what if we could just paint this? Um, so they're trying to develop a tool, um, where you can say things like, I need to generate a policy for records retention. You know, and it knows everything about your size, your town, and everything, and your goals, and it goes out and finds all that data that's associated with that.
Instead of, instead of an individual doing all those.
Yes, and then it assembles the framework of the policy or the or whatever the documented.
As long as it gives good citations, right, that's.
Supposedly, that's what they're aiming for is.
Cause I I always like that.
municipal solution.
Right, that's one of my concerns with a lot of AI tools is, it gives you stuff, but it doesn't tell you where it came from, so it's like, and sometimes it involves fictionalizing.
Flexity in the great AI system for references.
Yeah.
Try that out, that's, basically, search in AI, it's, it does a really good job of reference.
Yeah, all right, well, so uh, so we'll revisit this uh. Future records retention policy and then uh communicate with the bylaw review committee when we're ready to. Move forward for that.
But subject two gives them the ability to move ahead on what they're doing, right?
Yeah, they just want to add this section, some of the records.
And certainly, but I just wouldn't want to go to special town meeting or the next next national meeting, and say, please, please. Add the word subject to the policy and then.
Can I see that policy?
It allows them to table this one until it's ready.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, don't don't worry, they have plenty that we can talk about.
All right, well, that's, uh, I'd like to move along then, uh, to ten, so review plans for driveway Memorial Ball Field, and I know. I I see John Dudley is on.
Yeah.
So, did you want to start us off on that?
Oh, yeah, just contextualizing, John can talk about the area and the project a little bit more, but um, this is a request to extend money from the Recreation Revolving Fund, as this board talked about a few meetings ago. Um, expenditures in excess of ten thousand dollars require select for for town meeting approval, um, so Parks Commission discussed this, and John, do you want to talk about the specifics?
Yep, so I uh, I met with three different contractors, went over this project with them, it is the driveway from. The parking lot off of Tats Avenue up to the playground. I know that it was on the capital improvement plan for further in the future, but. For whatever reason, this winter, it ended up being a complete failure, and now we're kind of forced to fix it. So we're looking at uh anywhere from, well, the lowest quote would be fourteen thousand five hundred twenty dollars, and the highest quote were seventeen thousand six hundred and eighty, so. The Parks Department met and we'd like to request. The ability to spend up to twenty thousand dollars to fix this driveway.
What's the uh, the scope of this, is it paving or is it just leveling?
So they're gonna, they're gonna come in, they're gonna rip out the existing driveway. Uh, reset the subbase for the driveway and then pave.
Awesome, and so the request being above the quote, that is assuming a contingency for un- unknown scope at the time, is the park, is it, isn't the Parks Commission's intention to go with the lowest of the three quotes?
Yes.
Right, so what do we need?
And so, so just on a on a procurement side, this is uh over ten thousand dollars, so they're required to go out and get three quotes from people who do this sort of work, it's under fifty thousand dollars, so it did not require a full scale bid.
Great, thank you.
I'm going to motion to prioritize the Parks Commission to spend up to twenty thousand dollars on Memorial. Ball field paving project.
Revolving?
From the Parks Revolving.
Sorry.
Perfect. Okay, further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Great, great.
That's gonna be really nice.
Great.
Thanks, Donner.
Thank you for that, John, thank you, thank you for being so patient, I know. Cause you're all about a lot of AI questions, so.
Oh, that's, I'm I'm learning every time.
Okay, great, thank you for that.
Have a great night.
Thanks.
I saw they're starting the library paving.
Yeah. Is that, uh, maybe that would come up with a town administrator review?
Maybe it will.
It will. So it's the next on the agenda. It's awesome, oh, sorry, there, yeah, so the uh, library, um, is going to be closed locations from the eight, May eighth through May twelfth. Uh, we're doing the paving project that this board allocated ARCA funds to pay for, um. Uh, I met with the library director and the police chief about how we can possibly. Use either shoulder parking or use alternative parking, and there was just no safe way to get any meaningful amount of cars parked and then. Access the building while the site work was going on, so made a determination to to um, to close the library for those days. Um, if your books do during those days, you can return it after the library reopens with no, with no penalty.
I have a question, what's the impact on the employers?
So I spoke with library director as well, and I said to treat these like, um, treat these like snow days. Um, so folks who are regularly scheduled to work, um, if they have any sort of work that they can do. Uh remotely, or if there are staging things where you can have a couple of folks come in and do some picking while stuff's going on the first two days of the project, go ahead. Um, but I I said treat it, treat it like a snow day for these folks, because it's not them. To force them to take PTO for a situation that they didn't ask for, and then to have them not be paid for a situation that they don't control, I thought was unfair.
True.
Great, thank you.
Um, all right, some other stuff, so um, last week, I had a MECC, the Metacom Emergency Communication Board meeting, um, we will be um going. Uh, so Regional Dispatch will be moving forward with an agreement to merge. Um, and IMA to further explore merging with Semrec, which is the other regional, um. Dispatch in the area of Foxborough, Norton, Mansfield, and Easton, um, the specifics of the board seats and the funding piece still TBD, uh, but we. Need the IMA to be able to apply for state nine one one funding, um, for this, for this. Um. The uh, the Norfolk TA um recently announced that he was leaving to go to Bridgewater, um, so. Um, Norfolk permanency on the merge, there was there was discussion on who's gonna take it, but it'll be Franklin and who else, and so that's all kind of up here right now. Um, three projects that are kind of all ongoing, no specific updates, Comclass website and the uh, agenda module on the website, or we have. Pretty much five monthly meetings on all of these, we're still on schedule to finish this summer, this spring on on all three.
It's not a speed, yeah. Looks good.
The website?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's nice. Um, I really like the color palette, like how the blue works with everything all year. Um, and just a reminder, right now, the library has its own site, totally distinct from the town, um, we're going to bring them within the town. Kind of branding and and setup, um, but when you click library, it goes to a whole page that has only library, and a search for the library, and all the buttons are with libraries, so. When you click, you know, planning, you get the whole website still, and you can now get to other departments, but library has a distinct. Feel to it, but still within the the family of town website. Uh, we had an open enrollment um and health fair uh last week. Um, some folks made some changes, we we put together a um. Optional basket um program for employees, where it's totally employee paid, so folks came and kind of renewed that and added some more features to that, which is great. Um. We're doing some cleanup on procurement and disposition, um, just making sure everyone understands their responsibilities under prevailing wage law. Um, and then. Um, General Bylaw Review Committee is looking at disposition policy right now, uh, or disposition procedures right now, um. When you want to throw something away.
Ah, that, okay.
The bylaw says right now that if if you want to get rid of something, and the original purchase price was fifty dollars or more. Select board needs to approve the disposition of that, so. It was, it was updated, last updated in nineteen sixty one.
Uh, I wonder what you could get for fifty dollars in nineteen sixty one, but, right?
Yes. So right now, we have like a fancy like timestamp machine that was broken and non-workable. By the letter of the bylaw, perfectly not thrown away, they have to come to select board and say. And.
I have.
So we're looking at changing those thresholds, perhaps changing some of the usability stuff, right? If something is in disrepair, does that need to come here? Um. And that includes, for everybody's record, this includes when you are turn, trading in a vehicle for the purchase of a new vehicle. Select board still needs to um identify that item as available for disposition.
Mm hmm.
For the trade in of, yada, 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 um, but that doesn't make sense to me. So some cleanup on that. Um so we had supervisor training through the Mass Commission Against Discrimination. Um so anti-discrimination training uh for supervisors here, I love the lunch and learn, like uh like Jason was talking about before. Um that was really well attended, uh so thanks to Jen for bringing that on as well. Um I had on here up up in past all um M U R S D debt exclusion question um on their ballot. So just. Reminder that town meeting authorizes the debt, and then the ballot question exempts that debt from the limitations of Prop two and a half. And the way the motions were made at the town meeting, that authorization is contingent upon the exclusion of the ballot. Um and then just today, I attended the Mass Government Finance Officers Association's spring meeting. Um we had Governor Kim Driscoll give the opening remarks, which was which was a nice treat, cause they added it. Yesterday or the day before, and I got an email. Urgent agenda update, I thought they like canceled the meeting or something, you know, they just added the Lieutenant Governor at the beginning of it. Um but then there were some UMass economists, some people from um. Secretary of Administration Finance, some municipal bond folks there, um so it was a. It's always great to just talk with some other folks in municipal finance, and I don't always come up with solutions, but we've kind of talked through similar problems. Um they're really good sessions. Um and then that brings me up to today, so that's that's. Oh, sorry, one more, I looked at my schedule, sorry, uh I did meet with John Dudley and Katie and Chief Cursey. About um sign request procedure, so we've had a couple of street sign requests um from residents. Um so we're we're gonna do the thing where we kind of. Take kind of what we used to do and then formalize it with forms that other towns use and whatnot, um so what I'll present is, um you know. What what we do right now is just kind of the professional judgment of both the police department and the highway department, they say, do we, should we have a sign here, do we need a sign there, and just kind of go there.
Is it like any sign or is there still?
So not on state roads, so uh only on locally controlled roads. Um but it will be any sort of street street signage, so a turtle crossing sign, a stop sign.
It's like literally any sign.
A- any permanently affixed, you know, sign under the purview of the highway department.
Okay.
Roadway sign, roadway sign. But then it will still come to this board, but I'll have gone to the request for a rationale and our.
Yeah, I wanna know why there's a crosswalk sign on Blackstone Street that crosses into the.
We didn't come up with a sign removal policy.
No, it's just it's just there. So you built a house in front of it, I don't.
Uh I'm I'm unfamiliar with that.
So.
Sign assessment, maybe.
Unrelated uh to signs, but uh so at town meeting. With the budget passed, that means there are gonna be new positions, is there an update there?
Yeah, so we um we plan to post for, so the new positions, the firefighter, um the heavy women operator foreman for ground. Um the town planner, um we plan to post those positions. Um I had yet to talk to library about how they're going to use those four hours, so that's why I bring that up, but we're going to post those positions with age of one one start date. Um and then the council on aging position, we have an incumbent who took the position as part-time, knowing that there was. Tending in front of town meeting to go full-time, and the person was still interested in both roles, so we're not going to post that, we're just going to expand the hours. We're also posting for uh Veterans Agent, our Veterans Agent, Robert Schlesser is retiring, um come June thirtieth, so I'll have something to put together for him before that time.
Great.
You received a letter from the American Agent of Battle Parade that are asking about Memorial Day Parade.
Good question.
I have not.
She posted something on Facebook.
Yeah.
Everybody to participate.
Right.
Last year, we never received it, she did say it was sent, but we had a transition with the town administrator.
Okay, right.
I just wanna make sure that.
It's a good point, because that's uh we have one one meeting in between, so.
Yeah, Memorial Day's a little earlier this year.
Oh, yeah, ma- ma- second, I see that post.
Right. So is it is it the twenty, what what is the date?
May twenty sixth.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. So we don't, so we don't have to have an extra meeting to.
Yeah.
Talk about the parade.
Well, the day of the Constitution. Which one?
There is, um. There was an issue on the survey about how many acres were actually included, and we're going back and rewriting the PNS to reflect that.
Okay.
Um it was material enough to require a PNS revision. But not to change anybody, including the grand tourers' participation in it, um so that that's.
Okay.
We're ongoing right now.
Do uh do you think we're at risk of this?
Um the folks working more closely on it than I am say no.
No.
I can get it.
Just trying to keep.
Yeah, I get.
Yeah. Reading about some of that in the minutes. I think it's June is when the that uh deadline is. Early June, I think, but like the now here, right, in May.
Reviewing, you know, having the minutes to review all the time is going back in time, looking at the. You know, old meetings, refreshable all that.
Just this, I'm just looking at my Facebook chat chat. The commander from last year, and she had placed it in a box in the parking lot.
Oh, like a physical letter?
Well, I don't know which box, but she says, I already sent in the request, hmm. I put it in the box in the parking lot last week, yes, I need your.
There are mail mailboxes, I mean, could, yeah.
Oh, we'll we'll.
Okay, okay.
We have, we have time.
Yeah. On that. Yeah, thank, thank you for bringing that up, maybe we can, maybe we can put it on the agenda. Uh even before we find the letter with the anticipation that we will get a letter one way or the other.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure. I'm sure she will.
Alright, if we don't have one.
We don't count, too.
Okay.
Yes, maybe watching the YouTube video, while they're still there, because no one's giving business. So, oh yes, so was that, uh, okay, I know we we had a lot of questions, any any other questions for Jeremy before we move on?
Okay.
So uh future agenda items, just to revisit, so uh we're gonna be talking about uh committees, possibly affordable housing committee. The nineteen twenty six committee that uh I think Jason, you were gonna bring that up back after May nineteenth.
It's on the May twenty first schedule.
So you, okay, uh highway road plan, uh when are we expecting?
Yeah, that will, um right now, so we're doing the inter, the intersection of Hartford Avenue, Main Street, and the Hopedale and Calvert Farm there.
Mm-hmm.
Um. But we on that contractor, we initially thought. At June, end of June, and then it was April first.
I think it's been any market, so.
So they have, they say they held a year. Uh my somewhat cynical take is that they don't have a tenant yet, and they're dragging their feet on this expenditure. Um but they say, you know, they're probably trying to play any pushback, so we don't have a date from them, so we're trying to coordinate our. Work on Hartford Avenue, because that's the plan, the next plan, with their work, so we don't have crosscuts and brand new pavement, like.
Are we gonna like go? Like if it goes to the end of summer, and are we just gonna go?
We're just gonna do it, yeah, and then try to place that, John Salon, no, but he talked about this in ways. Um you know, place the cuts in the least.
Right.
Whatever, right, not, at least disruptive. So we're holding out for them, but we're not gonna wait another year, this is a project that, in John's telling, um he had anticipated or wanted to do last year. Um but did hold off, so. I think we'll have John ask for that. And we talked about it a little bit uh earlier, but um. The chapter ninety allocation has always been two hundred million dollars, chapter ninety is what we use to, on roads, and it's split up on population. Employment and road miles.
Mm-hmm.
Um. In the bond bill that the governor filed, there's an additional hundred million dollars that's allocated solely on road miles. So we may get, and it, you know, a more than fifty percent increase, um should should the.
And I feel like there should be a bonus for towns that people drive through.
To get to other towns?
Yeah, like, I mean, like in, I don't know, there are a lot of, we're we're kind of a cut through town for a lot of people.
Yeah, for Rhode Island, for Blackstone.
We talked about people trusting a lot.
Mm-hmm.
We do not have their personal property access.
Right, yeah.
She said she submitted the last Friday.
Did she say a physical, like hard copy or, okay, okay.
Definitely are.
So you need to see these agenda items, these are these are intended to be future moving, but these are gonna feed into our, what twenty six and beyond goal. Not so much our very ease piece, but what's.
Right, right, yeah, sort of big, yeah, bigger bigger picture plan, yeah.
Yeah, and the um Chief Bangla, this, this is, you know, folks have talked about the physical plant of the of the fire department, but. Um exactly, like so after um. After this budget session, we sat down with the chief and some staff members, and we just talked about what kind of staffing means to them. Um and I thought it was, uh I thought it was a moving conversation and about the demands on their time. And that will be useful to have that presented to them.
Right, which reminds me, we. Sorry, the fire department had a very active day yesterday, and I I think uh like um.
Yeah, so so there was. Certainly, so at six thirty yesterday morning, um there was a call to our dispatch about fire, if he's in needs on sixteen. Um. Our engine showed up, um not quite sure how soon after, quickly after, um the chief was on scene, he had a full recall. Um all career members of our department were there, and there were sixteen other towns that were there.
Sixteen.
Um twelve different tankers, uh because the principal concern is getting water to the fire, so there was a circling parade of tankers. Followed from communities, uh state hazmat was there, uh because of the presence of fertilizer in the building. Um District Seven Fire was there, um fire inspection, fire inspector, um and then by by noon, people were were off-site, so. Um it was taken under control, uh ladder truck um was used to attack from from the top, uh but the building is likely a complete loss. Um and the the cause was yet to be, it's yet to be determined. Uh Route sixteen, as anyone's traveled, uh knew it was shut down, very disruptive to to traffic. Um we had one minor injury, we're still kind of stuffing that out. We'll be fine, but um. It wasn't totally unscathed, and um so we, you know, like like I like to say, mutual aid is mutual, so we s-. We hear a lot about when we go to other communities and and you know, send our rescue one place or another, but we really relied on. Um other communities to to come and help uh with this.
A lot, sir, sixteen's a lot.
It is, a very, very impressive response.
That does a great deal, because we've got always that response. A great deal of all this town, and leadership of the entire management's firepower.
Yeah, so and I want to have the special thanks to Chief Bangl, who's on vacation yesterday, and he. Telling anyone who who can hear, I have to leave here by noon or I miss my flight, so he was onsite in gear.
Wow.
Commit now, uh so Deputy Chief Peter Ostrowski, yeah, sorry, I'm gonna butcher his name. Um who's on call, he's a full-time in Concord, um was the site commander um for most of the day, did the write-up to the report, and is the person who's. Who's in charge of all the chiefs away this week, um and I'll take both the next one.
What a way to start a vacation, though.
Yeah.
It was the first joke everybody made to him.
Gonna get on a plane and smell like smoke.
Yeah, hopefully I had time for a shower before then, but you know. And I think about like how I am when I'm getting ready to go to the airport, uh. Yeah, anyhow, so yeah, we, yeah, appreciate his uh dedication to his job, too, um. Take charge then, and all the all of the fire department for your role, and all the other neighboring, uh all those. Was it, sorry, sixteen, was that the number, like sixteen other towns? That's uh very impressive, I know, I saw that they put out a an official statement, which I don't know if it's on the website anywhere, I think I saw it on.
It was on their social media.
On their social media.
I think I shared it as well.
Okay.
Um yeah, and then, you know, highway was out there with the road signs, and police had details on either side, too, it was a pretty quick response from everybody involved.
Yeah, yes, all also, you know, the great job, right, I also want to um wish, yeah, because it's so, you know, rapid recovery, you know, like. There, you know, a little constitution.
Right.
So.
Yeah, it's it's a.
We'll get back at them very soon.
Hope so, too. It's a little little digression there, but we'll be talking more about the fire department, we'll be hearing more directly from the fire department about their uh. Uh I guess the current state and also, I guess, future, future needs and wants for that department. And then the.
I don't know if I would fix the assessment and tax assessment.
Um I believe, I have to start with Cherry, the input tester, but I believe you can file for an abatement at that point. Um and if it comes, yes, it becomes proportional based upon how much of the disco you're you're building, which you should.
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think it's automatic, or I'm almost certain it's not automatic from from our standpoint. Um that this owner might have to be proactive about that, but yeah, that's a customer service thing.
Maybe, yeah. Anyone knows the owners, they can.
Yeah.
Do you know that? Yeah, so, yeah. Bring them to the assessor.
You can buy lots of.
I was just there on Saturday.
So then, uh so it then we have a planned inventory of land, so.
Um yeah, so notes to follow up with Dylan, um town planner, um I have a check-in on Monday to kind of go over just. Planning projects for it, like saying we, town meeting funded this as full-time, let's talk about what this is, you know, formally going for.
And then, uh I guess I did wanna add on another future agenda item, which is I will need to reorganize at our next meeting. Um so I'm up for reelection uh next week, I'm running and opposed, so I think. Most likely, I will still be on the board, you know, there's a. Very uh coordinated camp, writing campaign, uh but we will, we will need to uh to reorganize, so like. Consider your, all of you, your interest in like, uh.
Didn't we put reorganization strategy into the policy?
Just, yeah, just been, I think, this is the mechanism of of that. When we actually nominate.
Oh, yeah, right. And you, yeah, do you remember?
The person has to accept the nomination, right?
So.
They have to accept it.
They have to like formally accept it, yeah.
Yeah.
See what else, and then there's also policies for the reorganization, and that's someone steps down, and um.
Okay, so. Great, so that'll be, that'll be at our next uh meeting.
Are there any open seats where there's nobody running right now?
There is nobody on the ballot for school committee.
Yeah, and water and something else.
Oh, right, so right, I know, right, I think assessor, assessor, I know there's a, like, I can override, is doing a write-in campaign for assessor. For water, oh, right, so I think it's. Is Kevin Redden also doing the write-in campaign for that, I know he had started collecting signatures, but.
I had this handled, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Kenneth Ryan is up for reelection.
He is.
But he didn't do signature, then he was doing a writer.
He he did, he was at the candidates night, uh the Brothers of the Breach had their candidates night last night, so he. He did talk about that, although he did encourage others to consider stepping up at some point, I think. Unlikely anyone else will do that before Tuesday, um.
There is a three, so blank on the ballot is a three-year board of assessors term. A three-year men up the regional school committee term, and a three-year water commission term.
Okay.
All of the other positions have one person um running, all of them are candidates for reelection.
So I I don't know of an active write-in campaign for school committee.
It, I I don't know how to definitely notice how it is, but we, like, if we could do some marketing. We could throw that in our goals for next year, and try to figure out how to drum up more.
Right.
Interest and.
Right, yeah.
I know it's community service essentially, but um but I think there's all, there's a lot that can be gained that individuals might not understand. That can be gained also from a personal.
Right.
Aspect as well as like, you know, there's things to learn here.
Mm-hmm.
Uh there's value to you even if you're not paid, um and there's definitely value to the community.
Right. And it's, it's got, it's got rewards, right, we're we're, uh you're contributing to the community. We are, we are contributing to the community and. We are, we are contributing to the community and I also enjoy the time on the board, so, um. Yeah, so.
Yeah, I don't know exactly what that looks like, but, um.
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, I think we did, yeah, we talked about that a little bit in our goal-setting meeting, but I don't remember how that, that fit into our. FY remaining FY twenty-five, we're almost, we're almost done with that, so. Um, yeah, so anyhow, so that, that, uh, yeah, I wanted to bring up that the reorganization is going to happen, just so that nobody is surprised that that is happening next time. Um, and, uh, were there other, other topics that were like?
Uh, there's clarification on committee creations, is that also a committee reorganization thing that we talked about or something?
I. I think it's, uh, both, I mean, I think, we have talked about, like, right, it was, uh, agricultural commission, right, so, um. And then I know, right, it would probably be good to look holistically at the, at the communities. I know, like, the, the tax aid committee has not been active for a while yet, so like, and there's still a vacancy on that.
But it's cool that it is liaison of certain committee that if I'm, if I'm not liaison, I can probably be engaged in that committee on sort of. What, what they see their role is, what their charter is.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe you say, as a select would, we, we wanna major committee, you know, something like that.
I mean, if it's got people in it, that's pretty unlikely.
Yeah.
But, um, but yeah, absolutely, I think that's. Probably another goal for us to do is design what a liaison's, you know, role is, but I, I see that as part of.
Yeah, and the revitalization was sort of fresh, like, twenty-six future.
Right, it's great.
Having intended a few, conversation went that way.
Mm-hmm.
I do want to, I've got the, started, yeah.
Okay. All right, were there, uh? Any other known future agenda items? I mean, as always, if you have, uh, items, you can send them to Jeremy and Katie. Um, and it'll be wonderful when we have that new website, there will be the possibility for people to fill out form for.
Yeah, definitely, so we're going, we're going through the kind of approval pieces it now, so what are, what's, what looks like, what are the groups, what are the levels, and someone wants to put in. So the packets will be much more standardized, um, they'll come in kind of memo format from the person who's submitting it, saying, this is. This is what I want, this is the action required, like vote or no vote or whatever, um, to transfer, whatever it is. Um, and then the backup associated with that will be, you know, PDF, you can kind of click through on the item to the. There, um, you can spell electronically, should we, you know, pull that up? I don't think that everyone's here, that makes a lot of sense, but if anyone's remote, I think it's helpful, um, yeah, it's, it's pretty great.
I can't wait, it's just like.
Yeah.
But like this week, it's, it's not fair to, like, Katie on a date, I didn't, you know, know she was sick, and I'm like, sending emails to her and asking, like. Reassemble the packet with more information, it's, you know, we should be doing, people putting the agenda items on, she's doing that on her own.
And then, so I wanna make sure we have, you know, that there is the, you know, kind of department head to Katie, to me, that it's not just, say, you know. Too crazy because he's going on, but him adding, you know, a bunch of PDFs to the packet and through, because he has permission and then they get to you, right?
Exactly.
That's what we're.
And I'm always CCing everybody, just make sure.
Yeah, and, actually, I mean, just on the topic of future agenda items, it would be great, once the, this rolls out, to have like a formal presentation to the board of the process. Um, to introduce it publicly and also just, yeah, so that we all know the process in detail. So then, um, our next meeting, so we have our, uh, next regular meeting at May twenty-first, and then, uh, I guess, continuing on the, um. First and third Wednesday of the month, uh, and. Yeah, no, no special meetings coming up that we know of, so. Right, never say never, um, so then, was there anything else before we, we have? We have an executive, uh, session on the agenda and the plan is not to reconvene before we adjourn. But was there anything else before we do that? Okay, so then, I guess, uh, so we'll move on to, uh, the executive session for reason three. So, um, I move to enter executive session under reason three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and this chair so declares. Second, is it?
What's it?
And.
No, we'll not reconvene.
Oh, and the board will not reconvene in open session, uh, for the signature.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Right, uh, we'll do roll call vote, um, all in favor, who goes, aye?
You aye.
Or, uh, Cooter, aye.
Well, you aye.
Okay, right, so thank you, those of you, uh, online, I think that, that was.
Yeah, have a good night, stopping the recording.
Thank you.
Right, some of this menu shows up.